All right, we are ready. I'm gonna call in to order. The Border Commissioners Administrative Workshop, Wednesday, August 14th, 2:00 P.M. Do I have any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the agenda as written.
Second, Mr. Chair. Any further comments? Those in favor? Oops, I'm sorry, roll.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
It's a workshop, J.J., less formal, right? Number three projects, A, Facilities Maintenance Quarterly Report, Eric Hanson. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
And if you wouldn't mind just pulling one of those microphones up to you, that would be great.
Good afternoon, Eric Hanson, Facilities Director. Today, I've compiled a quarterly report, bring you up to speed. After much painting, clean, oops, that's the last one. Following the facility's five-year plan, this past quarter, we have accomplished the weatherproofing of the south side of the South Annex. That's the county building on 517 Railroad in Brookings. By replacing the original siding with cementaceous plank siding that carries a lifetime guarantee of the building, the windows were re-flashed and caulked, and the failed egress door was replaced with a more durable fiberglass unit. Much dry rot from eight years of deferred maintenance due to non-county tenants was addressed and repaired during that operation. That side was also given three new coats of paint. The South Annex also had interior repairs to sheet rock, paint, and a new door installed, creating yet another office space in that building. The heating and air conditioning in the South Annex failed and was replaced in that building as well. That building, which houses the county vets and two other entities, needs a complete re-siding, I'm sure you're all aware, which will occur in phases as weather, funding, and personnel permit. There will be extensive dry rot encountered during that operation that has been there since the county acquired that building in September of 2002. That was a foreclosure that the county acquired. The south sides of the Colvin and the Annex Building have also been re-sealed. This procedure needs to be done every three years due to the interactions of old concrete and the hundred inches of wind-driven rain we receive annually. The replacement of the old-style fluorescent lamps with the new LED technology continues. Portions of the jail and the Annex hallways have been upgraded recently. The power bills already reflect the savings from that effort. It has been estimated that these retrofits will pay for themselves in two years. Kuscurry Electric does not presently give energy credits for this conversion. I'll continue to monitor for any rebates they might offer in the future. There are now two Wi-Fi bands available in our hallways, that's the Annex and the courthouse. The sheriff's office and the Colvin Building have their own Wi-Fi hookups. We have a secured closed band and an open public band available. A few offices have a functional signal as well. For the passwords, you can speak with either Ms. Melzer or J.J., he probably can give you those connection points. As predicted, the Annex main floor heating and air conditioning system failed. It has been replaced with a new generation of equipment that will last at least twice as long as the original first-generation equipment. The engineering accomplishments towards changing their design and the materials used are truly impressive. Mitsubishi experienced a fantastic learning curve in this past ten years. Through a cooperative effort, a new position for facilities has been budgeted for and approved. We'll see a new face in our facilities. We'll have an Assistant Facilities Director aboard soon. It's time to bring the next generation aboard so he or she can be hands-on trained to take care of these older buildings. There's no school courses available for archaic building and maintenance procedures. Hands-on is the only training substitute for forty years of experience. Budget-wise, the Facility Department is on track to date, barring acts of God and other unpredictable life events. Questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. On the Vets Building, are you gonna be getting an RFP out for the total cost of all that siding rather than so that we don't have to worry about what's this phase gonna cost and what's that phase gonna cost? I can see us, you know, nailing down just a really good cost for the whole thing.
Well, unfortunately, if we did that whole project in one fell swoop, that would put us into what Bowley-Davis Act, Davis Bacon Act price range where we would have to pay prevailing wages. And that would also mean that that building would have to be shut down due to the dry rot and repairs, that we'll have to work every individual floor, every wall individually.
So how long will that project take? I'm just curious. If I were a homeowner, I'd wanna know, hey, what's the total cost and let's get this sucker done. Oops, I shouldn't say those before I'm a commissioner, but...
Well, there again, you know, to keep the impact on the tenants to a minimum, I have scheduled one more wall to be completed before the rains start this year. That would be half of the building, so you could project probably two years before that building's gone through and redone.
Wow. Okay, and then one other just comment. I notice when I go to Costco up in Salem, you can get the LED lights at a huge discount because they give, I guess, credits up in that area, electric credits. And so I don't know whether you're, you can do that, but that would save a lot of money, I think.
Yes, unfortunately, the new generation of LED requires an electrician to retrofit the existing fixtures. You cannot just plug in LED to an existing floor.
I'm just talking light bulbs.
Yeah, I get those at manufacturer's cost at a deep discount.
Oh, do you?
Presently, yes.
Good enough.
Ms. Melzer?
Can you give us an update on the Port Arthur Transfer Station?
Um, yes. Luke Pyle from CTR and Julie and a few of you were involved in replacing the transfer station pole style of building. It has been brought to my attention through research that replacing it with a steel structure is beneficial all the way across the board. I've in touch with two steel manufacturing, steel building manufacturers, and they're cooperating. And also, I have a engineer architect onboard that I meet with on the 20th of this month to look at our options, weigh them, and we'll discuss this in a following meeting before we move forward. There are two main options to be considered. One would be buying a prefab from a steel manufacturer with the alterations. And we have to get into the alterations because the rear of that building differentiates it from ninety-nine percent of the steel buildings because they have to drive a trailer underneath of the building on that end, which creates engineering challenge to create a free span that's safe and durable and resistant to our climate. So that's where the engineer will have a say and see if he can alter an existing plan and kit to sustain that rear gabled end wall with that long of a span.
What is the clear span on that?
I estimate sixty-four feet and by nine foot, eight inches tall, freestanding.
CTR previously mentioned that they were willing to help with the cost of this structure. Have you negotiated anything with them or do you want me to kinda do a wink and a nod to Luke and get something done or?
That is intermingled with the fact that they raised the county rates from the three to the five percent that the county receives. That's sort of a trade-off there. Now, if you can go in further, that would be much appreciated. Luke and I have a good relationship, and he is open for negotiations on that matter.
Okay, 'cause I don't mind talking to him because I've negotiated other discounts for the county before.
Yes, you have, thank you for that.
Yeah, I think the max clear span on a steel building is eighty feet, as far as I know.
Yes.
From the buildings I've put up, I don't know, I think on the buildings that they do out of Kus Bay, I think their max in that place is sixty feet. So I think of sixty foot, I just see the cost differences between a steel building and a pole building being much more beneficial for a pole building than a steel building, having put them both up in different places myself. The labor is really difficult with steel buildings, especially when you get into engineering and them big clear spans.
Yes, well, I'd like to look at both odds.
Oh, absolutely, I agree. I have a couple of questions also. I applaud you for looking for a new hire for replacement, 'cause I know you're going to be hopefully retiring to a long, happy retirement here soon, but I'm just wondering, is this gonna be something that we put out through, you know, for a hiring process, I don't know, through Ms. Melzer or how we do that, through HR?
Yes, Julie Swift has posted this position.
Okay, all right. And then I had one more question on some of the maintenance issues that we have, and I'm not complaining about this, but I think it's in our best practices. Competition drives prices down. So I am one of those that likes to see bids on things, a bid process, expedient, but done, like the air handlers that we just put in. I know Mitsubishi had done the last ones and they worked with you, but I'd like to see, you know, more companies come in. When we do maintenance jobs or like the siding job or other jobs that we do in the county, I know it's within your authority to choose certain people, but I would, I'd like to see this board consider maybe more that we have a bid process to that where we have companies come in and bid. If I know I'm the only bid on something, I'm a little less sharp on my pencil than I am if I know there's three people that are gonna compete on that same job with me. And I think, again, I'm not saying anything against you or anyone, I'm just saying I think the more competitive we can be to force people to sharpen their pencils, as long as we're getting apples for apples, I think it's a smart way to do business for the county.
Absolutely, I agree with you totally, and normally, I'll take at least three bids per project.
Okay. Those are my comments. Anyone else?
Good work.
Counsel?
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure, it sounded like I heard a couple of things, you were talking about some projects and we were working on a building or something, doing something to a building, and we were doing it in phases, and you said if we put it all together, we'd have to be subject to Davis Bacon or what have you. I'm pretty sure we're not allowed to break a project up into pieces for the purposes of avoiding Davis Bacon. I thought you said we were breaking it up into pieces to help the tenants out and to be less disruptive on the tenants, but that could become an issue. We'll just have to talk about it, but just for the record, I just wanted to make sure, you know, get clarification on that.
Yes, the reason we don't wanna combine all the other sides of that building in one phase is because of the intrusion. We would have to relocate the tenants. That is my main concern.
Okay. Again, and finally, I'd just like to say thank you for what you did out there in the air conditioning units. It looks a ton better.
Yes, it helps if I'm complete with a project before I'm evaluated.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
You didn't call us in to help though that weekend, I was a little disappointed, but you got it.
That was a real one, you didn't wanna be there. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have B land parcels recommended for protection, Mr. Hopkins. Uh-oh, he's coming for your mouse.
Yep.
Be a nominal fee, my friend.
Sure you will.
Nice when it works, huh?
Josh Hopkins, Currie County Parks Director. We're here today to discuss lots that were previously added to an order. In November of 2017, the Board of Commissioners voted to institute Order 20470. What this order did was section off lots of land throughout the county to be used and maintained as until they are evaluated for future parks and recreational facilities. When we started with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, we started looking into these orders and all the lands that the county had in their GIS systems that were listed for parks, just to get a general idea of what we could do and what we couldn't do and what we might wanna be actually keeping. When looking into this order further, we found that almost all of the land parcels listed in this order are actually marked as wetlands in the county GIS. With them being marked as wetlands, it creates a lot of issues with what we can and cannot build, and even if there was a lot we wanted to build on, there's a large process in place to even get to the point of being able to even see what we could build on there. So we continued to look into it and identified lots that are, some of them are still in the order, but some of them are not, that aren't in the wetlands, and a large group of them are actually where we've talked about building the Boy's Cove Extension or some other county park recreational facility. So looking at this order, these are all the lots listed in the order. Every one of these red dots or red squares is county-owned land on this picture. This green through here is the GIS wetlands marking. So you can see that all of these lots that were added in this section, it's like a forty-acre parcel through there, virtually all of them, except for one and a couple of little bits of them, are wetlands, leased in the GIS. And while there is systems and places to go through and delineate that, it's a large process, it's a cumbersome process. Whereas over here in the blue squares, you'll see that there are lots that aren't listed in the order down here, but they are buildable, they would be able to be used as a parks property because it's not listed in the GIS. At least they're available to spend the time to evaluate for a parks property. These three lots up here are actually in the original order. All of these lots down here, there's like, each one of these squares is about one acre. So there's nine total lots right here. This is where we've talked about doing a Boy's Cove Extension in the past. Part of the reason we've talked about doing it out here is it's a half-mile from the main campground. With that, it takes it out of the residential area. There's, I think, only one house that was recently built right here, but it's less residential and it's gonna be further out of the wind, which is our main complaint for our campers. Although they're there for the wind for their kite surfing, when they get off the water, they don't necessarily want the wind going. So if we were to look at this, we would decide this would be a good spot to evaluate for a campground. Additionally, in that lot or in that order, it listed other lands on page three, and with those lands, we looked at them through the Parks Committee process, made some evaluations, and just kinda saw what was actually there. Of the lands that were listed in that section of it, three of them are already recreational facilities, that would be Lobster Creek, Bagnall Ferry, and Boy's Cove. So they're not necessarily needed to be in this order to be evaluated for future campground recreation. One of them, the North Bank Rogue Property, I believe has been leased to the Niseka Beach Water District at some point during this process, so you know, there's that aspect of it. The South Bank Checko Property is one that the Parks Committee doesn't feel we could really develop much on. It's on kind of a slide area and there's hydrology issues throughout it. And then that left us with two properties that the Parks Committee did feel that we should maintain for potential use of parks facilities or at least until we can get evaluated out through. Of those two properties, the first one is Elk River. This is a twelve-acre parcel split on two sides of the road. You've got about ten acres of hillside right here and it's pretty steep, so we're not really sure what we'd actually want to develop on that part or if we could. But down along this area, we have about acre and a half, two acres that wraps the creek or the Elk River down here. This property, in the past, the county has talked about possibly putting a boat ramp on. It's a mile away from the Fish Hatchery that has a boat ramp, so I don't really think that's very feasible for us or cost-effective. But what we have talked about doing is putting in some sort of nice day-use picnic area down along that creek that families would be able to go to and enjoy or possibly reserve for like birthdays and stuff along that time, because there's really not much of something like that in that area.
Give me one second, Josh.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Fish Hatchery's one mile up from that?
Yes.
Upstream, thanks for your...
Yep. Also, with this property, we are looking at doing partnerships with the USFS for the three campgrounds up the river. If we were to get those partnerships established, this property would have a lot more use to the Parks Department. We'd wanna get a camp host into that area. Part of the issue we have with the campgrounds that are up there is they are very remote and there's no services. A place like this would give us a spot that we could possibly build some sort of permanent camp house, host site, because there is power to the area and we'd have services for it. So, you know, this is one of the lots that we have recommended to kinda maintain, just because we do have things actively going in this area and it makes sense to do so. The next property we have is the Pistol River Property. This is forty acres. It's located in between Gold Beach and Brookings. It's, you know, a few miles off of the 101, and it's one of the last large acreage sites this county has that could be developed into something. With that said, if we did decide to maintain it to where we'd get it evaluated for a campground and were able to build a campground there, it would be the only campground in between Gold Beach and Brookings. We would expect it to be a campground that creates a lot of revenue for the county because not only would we have the traveling 101 travelers that come through here all the time looking for a spot to camp, we also have a built-in user base due to the wind sports that take place along that Pistol River stretch, similar to the wind sports that take place at Boy's Cove. We would most likely have the same campers at both sides, different times of the year.
Is that ground flat or is it hilly or?
No, it's partially up a hill.
Not flat.
And, you know, that's why, you know, with the original order, the idea was to put these aside until we're able to review them for parks purposes. Although it's kinda hilly, although it's kinda, you know, got its different typography, that doesn't mean that something couldn't be built there like a campground, but before the county parks puts a lot more of the staff time in and financial resources and to get surveys done or engineering specs, the purpose behind this original order was to make sure that it is locked up at the moment so that we have justification for that. When we get to the point to where we wanted to move forward with the building of facility or anything along those lines, those are all board decisions you come back for and take care of at that point. But this is one of the parcels that we've wanted to maintain, because although the county has hundreds of lots out there that we own, we've got two that have been looked at as possible campgrounds, because we just don't have that many lots that are of this size location-wise or a lot of it is just size. We've got plenty of these weird little twenty-foot-long stretches out there, but not a lot of actual acreage that we could actually develop into. So with all that being said, we kinda have figured out what the board would like to do moving forward. One of the options that was out there was that we could just leave this order as is and then create a whole separate order, adding these lots that we'd like to add to them, which are all listed in the packet information under the recommendation on the memo page. That was one option. The other option would be to repeal the original order and in the same meeting, create a new order designating these properties to be retained for future parks and recreational facilities until they're evaluated. Similar wording is what the current order is, but clean up the order, free up the properties that we know we don't have any interest in having on there. And then if we were able to do that, what we'd be looking for, Parks Committee's recommendation is kinda to sell any of the properties that we don't want to like an environmental wetlands conservation group or try to work out some sort of lease with them, since it is a wetlands all throughout here, so anyone that wanted to develop out there is gonna run into the same issues that we don't wanna run into. So that's why our recommendation at this point would be option two, where staff prepares documents to repeal the original order and at the same meeting, bring apart the new order, and with the new order, we preserve the lots that we're interested.
Wouldn't it be easier just to amend the original order to get rid of the properties you're not interested in and add the properties that you are? I don't know.
And I think that would kinda be, Counsel?
I like the two steps where you, because really, we're just taking a fresh look at everything, so we're basically staying out with the old and the new, it's actually harder to track when you change stuff from time to time and you have to figure out what version you're looking at, so I prefer that.
Just start fresh?
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
Ms. Melzer, do you have any opinion on either of that?
I agree, I've already drafted it, so...
Oh, okay.
At first, when Josh brought this to my attention, one of the things we realized was that original order was a heavy carry and that it's a property down in Harbor that should not have been...
Yeah.
In my opinion, it was just easier to avoid the old one and start with a new one.
Okay.
And it's ready to go, so it should be a little...
I always say whatever's easiest.
So would the board like to bring that to the next meeting?
I'm fine with it.
This is good work. I mean, one of these days, we're gonna figure out how to turn all these, as you well put and you stated before, you worked on this three years ago, these odd-shaped properties, one of these days, we're gonna be able to turn them into some kind of advantage for the county. You didn't mention, if you wanna go back to the other slide there, yes, thanks, there's the old Highway 101, there's a new Highway 101. I hadn't thought about what you referenced there for the surf, that's only about two miles, isn't it?
Yeah, it's...
And I said it's very, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say, it's not a large trek for them to make.
No, that is, that may have some merit, and the access to this is not good. That's definitely an issue.
That's an issue, but you know, it's something we could work on, it's just, I don't think, there hasn't been a long time since we've really worked on it. Additionally, it's been brought to my attention that that parcel, that forty acres, used to be logged to the county and was a pretty decent revenue maker. And sometime, they stopped doing that, I'm not sure when the county did, but if you look down here, you can see, it looks like there is some old probably skid trail up into this spot, maybe it was the old landing type of a thing. So there's things that we could explore that may be lost, buried somewhere in a deed or anything like that. It's just a matter of spending, you know, to be frank, my time doing this and knowing that these properties are just up there for the highest bidder as opposed to spending my time and knowing that as of the moment, while I'm spending that time, they are being evaluated and they are kind of being preserved. And, you know, like I said, anything that does happen with them comes back to the board for recommendations and everything like that.
Do you know if that has an easement on it for ingress egress?
As far as I know, there's no known easement, but that's part of the whole getting into the, if we logged it at some point, I'd like to think there's something.
Yeah, but there's no fur on that.
There's gotta be right away somewhere along that property.
No, Doug, fur, it's all, the access, you see the off the 101 then that looks like a trail, the Y at the top? That's on the Crook Estate and so that's the only way you can really get there, because it's all fenced on the old highway, right? Which is the straight line here, that's the old highway.
Yeah, this is Darberville, Pistol River Road, whatever it's called.
So there's very little fur on that, it's almost all spruce, and it's beautiful, you know, it's gorgeous in there, so, but the only access is from the east end up the hill. I'm sure you've been there.
Yeah.
So direction, huh?
Well, I do know that board in 2016 had at that time, gave me a motion, they wanted to see that one, their Ford Campground, and then the river one, they actually had talked about the exact same thing that Josh is talking about, so, you know, we've had these preliminary approvals and then, of course, they're in the order to be preserved for a park, so I think cleaning up the order and have Josh move forward to researching to see what we can do, I think is the next step that we need to do.
What I'm wondering is, can we, the Elk River one, I know you said you had use for the acre and a quarter, basically acre and a half, what you said it was there. The other part, the eight acres that you said was a little steep over there, could we pull that off, subdivide it down into some building? The other part, the eight acres that you said was a little steep over there, could we pull that off, subdivided down into some building lots? Can we do that or no?
No, it has.
It's earmarked?
I think it has a DOT, does it have a DOT restriction on it Josh?
I don't know what the restriction is on it. I do know that we're talking a very steep graded hill right there. Although I'm sure people with the right equipment could try to build something, it'd be a real trething.
Oh, that's, that's deep, okay.
It has restrictions on it. I can recall from researching that one previously that it's one that we were not able to split.
Okay. Alright, why don't we, uh, make a, can I have a motion then?
This is a, not a business meeting. It's only a workshop.
Yeah, just a, yes, a direction, Mr. Melzer. So yeah, why don't we do that? Yes. Up to the microphone, sir.
Does, uh, Josh, does the Elk River peep, the head, the steep Elk River Peace border National Forest land?
I'm not sure what's on the other side of this. It's all mixtured between private property and, uh, different national.
So deeding it, if so, deeding it to them might be a good option here to get some money?
Uh, you know, there's always some sort of option out there if we're really looking into it and we're trying to work on a bunch of our partnerships with them. So again, a good piece of property to hang on to just cause you never know what could be accomplished if you got this.
Mr. Palmer.
Okay. The, um, and another question is, uh, on the, uh, the lower parcel here. The, there is a ramp at the hatchery, but it's really, really busy. So it wouldn't necessarily preclude the need for another access to the river there.
Yeah, and you know, as part of the process going through here, there we do, you know, Parks Master Planning type thing to where we look into all of that and we might find there is a spot that would be a good spot to put in some sort of boat launch. And that opened us up to a couple of things like, you know, state marine board grants and whatnot. But, uh, cost maintaining boat launches are pretty high too, so it kinda just depends.
And finally on the, uh, the Floris Lake piece. The, uh, is there a reason to do this now? I mean, the, uh, these lots have all been reserved, so they're there to develop for recreation. Is the idea of segregating the ones that are not suitable so that they can be sold?
So the reason we're looking at this now is cause our Parks Committee came into being January. We've had several meetings since then, uh, I think it's on a bi-monthly cycle. And the reason we're wanting to move forward with this is cause we're wanting to move forward with getting the surveys done, getting the work done. Uh, but with what's already listed, like I said, these six lots down here, all of these ones aren't actually on this order. Only these three up here are, and then these ones down here aren't on the order. So the idea is if we're gonna be investing the time, money and just, a lot of it's just the time into doing this type of work. We wanna make sure that, you know, there's not a situation to where we're looking at this lot and one of the neighbors contacts the county and says, hey, I wanna buy that. And for the rest of these, like I said, we're not necessarily interested in just hanging on to parcels that hang on to parcels. We do have a statutory process in place to where if, you know, we found some sort of quality conservation agency wanting to come in and possibly buy those to reserve them for like antiquity styles scenario. That money could then be used for campground development and everything like that. So if we were able to sell a lot or two here, it would speed up the process of our surveys for these areas.
So you need to add a few to add because they are suitable for developing?
Correct.
You wanna take the others away so that you could sell them off if the opportunity is there?
If the opportunity arises, but you know, one of those things, you're not gonna get someone wanting to develop right here on a wetlands cause they got all the logistical hurdles. So it'd be more of a situation where we're reaching out to the different groups that come out to preserve these types of things and see if they would be interested.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Palmer. Alright, anyone else? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, C, land use appeals process, counsel.
Do we need to take notes on this?
Wow. We'll see.
Could you adjust that other mic too?
Here, there?
The one on your left?
This one?
That's a wild one.
Okay, hold on. I'm trying to get the county's website back up.
Go up one, Google Chrome and then just Google it.
Sure. Alright.
There it is down below, yep.
Right. Anything down here?
See the little icon just above the bar? Yeah, right there, you had it.
No.
No, no, down, right there, yep.
Thank you.
Nope, nope, that's something else that was there from budget season. Sorry.
It's okay.
It's too bad you don't have a little icon.
There we go, good.
Go for it.
We knew we had one of them.
This is actually a good system. Just takes a bit to learn it, huh? Yeah.
Thanks Commissioner. So John Huddle and I'm County Counsel and we've got Becky Crockett and Nancy O'Dwyer in the planning department here as well. So anticipating, uh, some appeals coming before the commissioners on some land use matters. In the past, we've had appeals come to the commissioners, most recently with some activities on a pipeline for a golf course irrigation. Uh, and prior to that, the golf course application itself. I don't know that all of you on this board were board members at the time of those applications. And so for the interest of preparing for those, uh, that you'll be ready, we'll just going over some of the um, appeals options for the board and the appeals rules for the board in our current code. And then at the conclusion of this, I'll step down to my computer monitor and talk about another, uh, option for appeals for the board. That doesn't currently exist, but, um, the board may wanna consider. So, uh, right now, this is, um, really the, our land development code is divided into general, which is one. Section, and that's got definitions, things like that. Section two is procedures, section three goes into zoning, uh, and seven is conditional uses, ten is enforcement. So in section two is our procedures. And we talk about what the Board of Commissioners has authority to decide in our, uh, land use. You can decide zone changes, you can decide comprehensive plan amendments and land use regulations. And those are generally legislation. Talk to you a little bit, um, you all have heard of the three branches of government, executive, legislative and judicial. In Oregon land use, uh, the local governing body plays all three, uh, roles. So, uh, these are your typical legislative roles where you are writing our laws. This actual excerpt being one of those and there's a process for that legislative. And then appeals of commissioned decisions, that's when you are, um, actually acting as what's called quasi judicial, uh, meaning you're acting like a judge. And you are hearing facts and applying, uh, legal standards and seeing if the facts satisfy the legal standards. And then rendering a decision, an opinion, an order. So, in an appeal, parties have to be recognized to have a party status. They have to have filed a notice of appeal pursuant to our procedures. And then they also have to, um, had appeared before the local body, uh, in writing or, uh, orally. And then it says the appeals body will first determine if a person is a party before deciding the merits of the issue. What I've seen in the past at different jurisdictions, uh, where the deciding, uh, body makes a mistake that gets remanded from the land use board of appeals, because after you all, you're the final local decision makers. If anybody really wants to, uh, question your decision, they take it to the state land use board of appeals. In the past, some decision making bodies I've seen, they will simply say, you, you know, person who's standing here before us do not have standing. So we are not gonna consider what you say. And then they go about, uh, listening to someone who they determine does have standing and determining those issues. If you ever want to get to the point where you say someone doesn't have standing, my recommendation is to say, you don't have standing, but just in case, we're gonna give an opinion on the things you're saying to us. Uh, that will usually solve and, uh, solve us from getting involved in a remand situation. The second one is what evidence are you going to look at? You're going to look at the staff report, the documents, uh, relied to by the applicant. These have been made available to the public. Um, and then of course, different documents and evidence will be submitted at the appeal hearing itself. And then if people ask for additional time, uh, you can grant them fourteen days, at least fourteen days, um, to continue the hearing before making a decision. And then again, this is what you're hearing is the hearing procedure quasi judicial. This is at the planning commission level. They determine also who qualifies, they regulate the course sequence and decorum, this is something you're familiar with. They dispose of procedural requirements, rule on offers of proof and relevancy, set time limits for presentation. I don't think that, uh, the Curry County Board of Commissioners has time limits for presentation and land use appeals. You can establish those times at the, at the appeal. I've seen typically thirty minutes for applicants and then other people have, um, three to five minutes to address, uh, the board. And again, the testimony has to be, this is a relevant standard here, has to be directed towards a criteria described uh, in, from, by the staff is what, uh, are applicable decision making, basically criteria being the laws. And then if they fail to raise the issues, they can't appeal that issue, that's called preserving the error. And basically it gives you a chance to fix things before they say, they can appeal to someone else and say you've made a mistake. And then, uh, this part here is important, um, to, for you to announce, uh, whether you have an actual conflict of interest. That's where the matter before you could result in a financial gain to you or someone in your household or business. Potential conflict of interest is possible, uh, gain, not an actual gain. And then this is what they talk about, uh, the director substantial interest. Or if you just are simply have a prejudgment or prejudice about the matter before you. There have been cases where, I'll give you a, for instance, on this last one. There have been cases where, uh, a person ran, uh, on a platform. There was a particular land use application to approve some, uh, development on a particular building. And a person spoke against that during that process. It went up to appeal to the land use board of appeals. While the land use board of appeals was thinking about it, that local jurisdiction had an election. That person got elected as a decision maker after they had already spoken against that, um, application. And probably ran on a platform of, I'm against that. It came down, um, on remand, so now that person is on the body to make the decision. And even though all of that background was, uh, factual and real, as long as that person can make their decision based on the facts in the record and tie those facts to the legal criteria. It doesn't really matter that they spoke against it, uh, in a prior life or in a prior, uh, situation. So really, uh, but the key, here's where you actually get in trouble, is for failing to declare those type of contacts, those type of, uh, situations. In other words, you have to announce these, okay? But that doesn't automatically disqualify you. So then what happens here is ding ding ding. When you announce those, that allows parties present to challenge whether you have a bias that, uh, prevents you from being fair. To challenge you and allow you to answer. And again, as long as there are facts in the record and the facts, uh, support the legal conclusions, uh, that usually gets you past any of these. The other one, and it's gonna come up a little bit later, and then we go back into, um, you know, presenting a staff report. The applicant is usually heard first. Uh, people who wanna speak in favor of the application go next. Those are members of the public, not the applicant. And then anyone who wants to be heard, um, against the matter. Uh, and then the applicant usually gets rebuttal time. And then you can continue the hearing, uh, typically again, if new evidence, uh, are being, um, submitted. Then, uh, at the end of the hearing, if all, if we're finally at the end, there's usually a motion to direct staff to prepare a final order. To give a direction one way or the other. And then that decision comes back and it says it can't be final until reduced to writing and approved by the majority who are present and it's signed by the chair. So you all get to see the matter in writing. You can't just say, go write a decision, that's what we approve right now. So you have to say, please go back, we're directing you to write a decision, um, either approving or denying or approving with conditions this application. And we'll consider that at the next meeting. Talks again about general conduct. Uh, we've seen this before, not disorderly, not abusive. They don't testify without receiving recognition. Again, they can't present, uh, irrelevant issue. Here is something that is a little bit interesting. So this talks about the planning commission. If the planning commission declines a case for any reason, such case shall be reset for review by the board. And this is where the Board of Commissioners, uh, would hear the matter on its own in it, in the first instance, at the very first instance. We almost had this, uh, with the golf course. The planning commission, uh, didn't even want to hear the matter. And we finally convinced him to hear the matter, but, um, it's possible that if they would've said, we're not gonna consider this, the board could've taken that up. That was with the golf course. So this is one way, if the planning commission declines to hear it. Other counties actually have a provision in their codes. I think Douglas and Coos County, um, have a provision in their code where they have like inserted in here, the Board of Commissioners can basically take a matter up, uh, on its own, uh, before the planning commission makes a decision. Uh, that for us is not available to the Board of Commissioners currently. I understand it's been presented to the Director of Operations and the Planning Director. And they will perhaps consider it when larger code changes are being made. Our, our code, um, land, land development codes commonly get revised. If the board wants to talk about that as part of a study session today, you can talk about that possibility. Um, but there's nothing in our code that has us doing that now. So then you can also take judicial notice, again judicial notice, uh, you just state them and make them part of the record. That would be for instance, um, let's say there's an application, Commissioner Boyce, for instance, we were just looking at those parks properties. And you said, I know that's the crooks land and this, that and the other. So if the applicants hadn't included that information in a land development code, you could say, you know, that's a matter of public record that the crooks have owned that land and we can find that out and so, uh, and there may be an easement or something. So you can actually, but you have to make that part of the record. And then this says there's a minimum of an audio recording, that's what we're doing down in the land development, uh, department. Up here, we do the audio and the video. And then we have a written order. This talks about again, if a person is not allowed to be a party below, and this is where I've seen it. They can actually, if someone says, so if they show up at a planning commission hearing on a matter and say, I wanna talk about this and the planning commission says, you don't have standing to talk to us. That person can actually appeal the very fact that they weren't allowed to talk below to you all. This is what a notice of appeal has to say, they have to file a notice of appeal with all these, uh, matters in them. Here is an issue that again, you're acting in your quasi judicial capacity. And you've heard about ex parte communications, you're not supposed to have ex parte communications. Members of the decision making body shall neither communicate directly or indirectly with any party or his or her representation or representatives in connection with any issue except upon notice and opportunity for all parties to participate. And then you can't take notice unless everyone knows what you're, uh, talking about. So all of your decision making has to be on the record and things that are in the record on review. Now, again, you've heard ex parte communications, very similar to the concept of conflict of interest. It's not an automatic disqualifier. An ex parte communication is not an automatic. It's not an automatic disqualifier. An ex parte communication is not an automatic disqualifier. The rules say you just have to disclose them, say who it was, what the content was. And then again, the people who want to challenge you on that ex parte communication can say, well, um, you know, let's talk about that. But putting all the facts in the record is the key. And then we have to make decisions in certain time by state law. Um, you know, they talk about evidence. That's again, your quasi judicial capacity. Really, pretty much you give anything anyone says the weight that you feel, uh, is a reasonable person conducting your everyday affairs. So hearsay is allowed. You don't have to make evidentiary rulings on complicated things like hearsay. Uh, you rendered a decision, you affirm, reverse, or modify, um, and then we send a, uh, a review. Uh, one other thing, um, only the members of the board reviewing the entire record may act on the matter being reviewed, uh, in agreement of at least two members. And we know that, that's how we do it. There's one other thing about the, your scope of review. It's a de novo proceeding and, um, these are the materials in your record. The materials and pleadings submitted by any party and then the materials submitted by the director. Then, um, the last thing is again, if we deny an application, people have to wait, uh, for a year. We can ask a new, for a new application, if new evidence is discovered or changes circumstances. So denying an application has some consequences for the applicants. And then this is a legislative hearing. It's slightly different. But if you remember, we've talked about doing zone changes and planning, uh, excuse me, zone code, zoning code changes. So for our legislative hearing, if we're going to make a new land development law, and you heard the housing ordinance where, uh, we talked about, we may amend our codes to allow this. And there was, um, you know, some clarification that we weren't suspending anything. We weren't changing anything with that resolution today. We would go through this process to come back. And you all, the first hearing is at the planning commission. They will make a recommendation to you. And then you would also commit or conduct a public hearing, uh, on the same, uh, zoning, uh, piece of zoning. And really, there's just a ma, a way to do the hearings and, uh, that's about it. So those are just your roles in the land use quasi judicial. I just wanted to clarify about the conflicts of interest and ex parte communication. They're not automatic disqualifiers and you need to make your decisions based on the information in the record, um, and the, and the law that applies. I don't know if you have any questions or if the planning director or community development director want to, uh, add to that, but just kind of a, just.
I just have one question. Um, we just passed a, uh, an emergency housing ordinance.
Yeah, also a resolution. Thank you. Good.
And every time someone wants to build, say, on outside the urban growth boundary and in the unincorporated areas, if there were to be a zoning change, does that have to come bef, before this board?
Yes, is a zoning, a zoning change, a, a change of the zoning code. I'm not sure. I haven't seen too many of these. Um, I've seen jurisdictions have what they called a quasi judicial zone change and a legislative zone change. A quasi judicial zone change was, let's say, I don't have a, a marker here, but let's say you had, this was, let's say this white area is a piece of property and it's zoned, um, rural residential. And this was exclusive farm use, these two pieces down here. I have seen in other jurisdictions, I, I wasn't anticipating this question, where these would be called the quasi judicial zone change. It only applied to a small, probably one person owned a piece of property. And that would typically go through the quasi judicial, not the legislative. And it would only go to a Board of Commissioners if there was an appeal, like we were just talking about on some of the matters that are being decided below.
Okay, so that would go before the planning department, correct?
Yeah, there would, there would definitely be a, well, thank you.
Or the planning board or whatever.
Here's how, here's how our decision-making works. Becky, Becky does this on a daily basis. If you want to come up and talk about our administrative decisions and then our planning commission decisions. Do you want to give a little, a little bit about what happens below? Okay.
The Curry County zoning ordinance actually gives quite a bit of discretion to the planning director for the ability to make administrative decisions. Um, and, uh, the prior planning director used that quite a bit. And I've used that quite a bit to speed applications along. Um, typically in making an administrative decision, I can go through the criteria and the code. We give notification and we ultimately make a decision and notify people of that decision. If they want to appeal that kind of decision, then it would go to the planning commission. And we have had a couple of those. Um, but generally, the decisions are fairly straightforward. Planning commission, um, I have sent decisions to the planning commission where I had the ability as the planning director to make that decision administratively. If I think that there's a, a lot of interest in an application, for example, I will go ahead and send that directly to the planning commission, send notification and have a public hearing. So the good thing is the code does allow a lot of discretion for decision-making. In reference to zone changes, just the one thing I would add is there's a difference in the kind of zone change somebody is asking for. If the zone change is from a resource zone to a non-resource zone, for example, that requires a comprehensive plan change in addition to just a change in the zoning on, in the zoning ordinance. A comprehensive plan change is a much labor, more laborious process as far as the public hearing and the expectation and the findings. Uh, it requires DLCD to review and help, um, review the findings and approve those. Um, so.
I'm glad you're in charge, Becky.
Yep. So, so if she makes an administrative decision, uh, if the planning director makes an administrative decision, the planning director has to mail out notice of that decision to people in a notice area or people who have asked to receive notice of those decisions. And those people could appeal that to a public hearing at the planning commission. So, um, we're following the, and again, I think they're fairly, they're procedurally just cumbersome. Takes, it says 120 days, but I've seen land use appeals and land use, uh, decisions take years. So I think the public process, I understand the purpose it serves, but boy, it, it takes a long time to get anything done. So. But I just wanted to focus a little bit and kind of get you guys in the frame of mind for when, uh, some appeals come your way. So that's it.
Thank you, counsel.
You're welcome.
I think we have no, uh, no others. So I think at this point, this workshop is adjourned.
Okay.